I call to order the work session, the Willsville City Council of May 19th, 2025 at 5:00 PM. I'll start by asking council members to review of the agenda and items on consent. Are there any comments? Okay. Are there any council concerns before we start the work session? Okay. Oh. Counselor Cunningham.
Yeah, so one issue that I wanted to bring up and make sure the rest of the council is aware of this evening, there was a post on Facebook this week regarding RVs that are being parked across the city. These specifically were talking about some that are in the Safeway parking lot, just a stone's throw from here. And I just wanted to make sure that the citizens knew that this is something that this council is aware of and that we are paying attention to. And I spoke with our city attorney earlier today and just wanted to receive an update on where we're at with our council goals on kind of the ordinance look at that we're looking at for RV stuff.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Cunningham. So as the council may recall, one of the council goals is around public safety and one of the outcomes was looking at code enforcement general issues in general. There were five specific strategies that were examined and one in particular on RVs and abandoned vehicles. Staff have done a kickoff, internal kickoff meeting to work on that entire outcome around the code enforcement and in particular on the RVs and abandoned vehicles. That's the first item that we will be bringing to council on work session. Currently, we are planning for one of the meetings in July to bring that to work session. So we'll be exploring, we'll be providing information of what we currently have as far as code enforcement. We'll look at other surrounding jurisdictions and what they do. And then we'll also be examining the potential for a permit program since that was one of the alternatives that was discussed at the council retreat. So we'll be bringing all that information at work session to get some information and direction from council of what you'd like to explore further at that time. So for any community members who are interested, that would be, we'll have more information, but that would be a great work session to attend to get some more information about RVs and enforcement in particular.
Thank you.
I only add, I actually met with one of the residents of one of the RVs who's currently on a wait list to affordable housing. His spouse works in the community and parks in a, on a private lot. I understand that a lot of people, you know, are very supportive of him. So not everybody falls within the same brush. So I appreciate all your work.
Can I add a comment?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Cunningham, for bringing that up. I've been out of town, but I noticed the social media comments and also received a letter or two about the RVs. And so when I came back today, I did drive around looking for the RVs and I did notice and took a couple of photos of my own. So I'm glad that it's going to be up for discussion. Thank you.
We will now move to pre-council work session agenda, the city manager recruitment process.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for your time this evening. I am just going to quickly open my presentation for you, but you received a staff report in the packet to talk about the different options for a city manager recruitment. One second. And then I've been told I need to remember to share, so that's what I'm going to try and remember right now. Yeah. All right, so as we, okay, just took a second to catch up. There we go. So as we spoke earlier in, I believe it was in March, we have a few different recruitment options for our city manager recruitment. City manager Brian Cosgrove is retiring at the end of the year. And we did speak about the first three options in March. We did not speak about one option. I was remiss in adding that that is also a potential option for city council to consider an internal promotion of a current city employee who they believe might be a good candidate for the position. Just to go over the comparison, just briefly, we did talk about using an executive search firm to have a more broad reach, a very transparent process. The cons of that could be that we have a higher cost. It's a lengthier timeline as well. We could also utilize internal HR staff to run the recruitment. It's a lower cost and there's a lot of internal control, but there is limited outreach and it does create an impact on staff. We also have a hybrid option, which provides a more balanced and flexible option for council utilizing both an executive recruitment firm and city staff to run the recruitment. It's a moderate to high cost and it requires additional coordination and a lot of really good communication with the recruitment firms. And internal promotion, it's a short timeline, provides stability for not only council, but then also for the organization. In reality, there are no recruitment costs. There could be other costs, but no recruitment costs. The only, or the cons that I see are it's a narrower pool of candidates and it's a perceived lack of transparency in the process. So when we spoke in March, I did talk a little bit about how much it would cost for a recruitment firm. I've reached out to a few just for verbal quotes. I have a draft RFP ready to go out if you decide that you'd like to go forward with an executive recruitment firm. But depending on the option that you select, the cost could be anywhere from, as I said, no recruitment cost if we use an internal, or if we promote someone internally, up to about $50,000 in recruitment costs for an executive search firm. And we did include that in our budget for the 25, 26 year, just in case that's an option that you selected. The timeline can be anywhere between four weeks and six months, really depending again on the method the council chooses for recruitment process. Four weeks for an internal candidate would mean we, there's, there could still be some process for the council to approve an internal candidate, so we still would need some time for that to happen. And six months, six months being on the higher of the timeline, where we would need to go through an entire RFP process, select a recruitment firm, and then go through the recruitment process after that. As mentioned in the staff report, there are options for a custom, for community involvement, and it can be customized just depending on the recruitment method. There are a variety of options to consider, including town halls, surveys, just a lot of different items that you can consider that we can talk about based on the specific method that you choose. And then looking at the potential timeline, because I know this is probably forefront of everyone's mind, is if we look to use a recruitment firm in any form, whether it be just solely the recruitment form or with the staff in HR as well, option one or three, we would need to do, we would need to start at the beginning of this list, right? So we need to put out the RFPs and then go through a selection process for those recruitment firms. If we would like to utilize internal staff and solely internal staff, we could start at phase one. And then if we would like to utilize a process where you promote an internal candidate, you would look at the last two steps in option, where it highlights option four. And that was a very brief description of my staff report. I was asked to keep it fairly short so that we could make sure we get through all of our, our work session items, but if you have any questions.
I have one. Thank you for bringing us up to speed with what we talked about a month or so ago. If we did have a candidate, an internal candidate that was interested, but we chose to use, let's say, the hybrid model, that candidate could still apply and go through the process that any other candidate would go through. Would that be correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and the visuals always really helped me. So in the past, for key upper level management positions, which model have we used?
It's been quite a mix. We've only, since I've been here, we've only recruited for the city manager one time and we did use a recruitment firm for that recruitment. We did recruit for the city attorney, Amanda Galhaman, in 2022. Yeah, it's hard to remember at this point. It all kind of blurs together. And we used internal staff for that, so I helped run that recruitment. And then for other, for other positions within the city, for example, executive team members, that would be, say, the community development director who just retired. We used an internal promotion process for that.
Thank you.
As I was looking through the job requirements for the, for the role, I did notice that it was kind of, under the physical requirements, it talks about standing and walking. I was just wondering if, if we were to have an applicant who was in a wheelchair, that might be kind of an unfair description for the role and maybe cleaning that up to ensure that we're not, you know, using, using that.
I can certainly look at that.
There should be a ADA accommodation type.
Generally, we do include language to state as far as moving between sites versus standing and walking. So I can definitely take a look at that as well.
That's all. Thank you very much.
So if, say we open it up to the HR doing it themselves and do it that narrow approach and see what we receive, and if we don't receive sufficient applications, or can we then go to the private recruitment? I'm trying to see financially if we can avoid that expense? Or is that taking too much time?
So I do think it takes a lot of time. I don't believe that with our city that we would have difficulty in recruiting top-tier candidates. I've already received a call from someone who said he was calling for a friend who is interested. So interested in this job and very interested in the community, so I don't.
Not a good friend, I would imagine.
No, I think, so one thing with recruitments at this level is the candidates really would like to try and be as confidential as possible throughout the recruitment process because they're in another position right now with another city probably, at whatever level they may be at. So that confidentiality is really important to candidates, which is one of the reasons why this candidate was calling for a friend. So I think we would receive the candidates. I think the difficulty would be is it places staff in a really awkward position if there are internal candidates, where we would be proctoring the process for people that we work with on a day-to-day basis, but people who we may report to, people who, you know, we may have already built those relationships with in the workplace.
So you need from us an idea of where we're going.
Yes.
I have another question though, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Perhaps, and thank you, Mayor, jumping off a little bit from your question. Can you give us a high level vision of what, if we just did an internal, no, not internal, if we used HR for the process, can you give us a high level of what the steps you'd be doing, be typical recruitment process? But my bottom line question is, what are we missing out, if anything, in your opinion, that executive search firm would, would be offering that we wouldn't have at our fingertips? Or maybe we do have those at our fingertips?
Sure. So I went backward a slide to the potential timeline because we would really start with phase one in the recruitment profile and recruitment strategy. And what I would do is meet with each of the counselors and the mayor to understand what you're looking for in a candidate, what you're looking for in the next city manager for the city. We would also meet with executive team members to see what, what they're looking for as far as their next supervisor, right? They don't get to hire their boss, but they do get to talk a little bit about what they're looking for as far as the attributes and the qualities that they're looking, or that they would like to add to the city or continue with the city. So it would take some time for us all to meet together and go over all of that information. And then what I would do is create not only the profile, but the strategy of where we are, where we're posting our position, who we're reaching out to, maybe even just, you know, a listserv, if it's ICMA where I'm posting, all those different things where we're creating a strategy of who, who we would like to apply for the position. Then we would go through the normal recruitment process where we're receiving applications. And in that sense, I, as the HR manager, would solely screen out candidates who didn't meet the minimum qualifications. And then those who met minimum qualifications would all go to council for review. That could be 10, that could be 30 and, or more. So it does take some time to go through that information for council, for HR as well, for council as well. And I think in those two steps, what we could be missing out on with just using HR staff is I don't, I don't have the same network that a recruiter does. Executive search firms do this as their, this is their day job. This is one of my favorite parts of my job, I will say. I love to recruit, but it is not the sole thing I do for the city. And so it would take a lot of time. And then the second piece of that is that selection process where perhaps the, the recruitment firm could weed out a few more applications based on the, the information that you would provide to them as far as your ideal candidate.
Any thoughts as to what you would like to?
Again, thank you for your presentation. I don't like spending money that we don't need to spend, but I feel like this is a really important position. It's the leadership for the city. And like you were talking about, the time commitment that it would take you away from your other responsibilities, that I'm tending to lean towards a professional recruitment company, just because of the position that we're talking about and that they do this on a day-to-day, you know, that's what they do. And they, I'm sure that we, there's lots of recruitment and that we would spend time selecting one that really is a good fit for our city. So that's where I'm leaning right now.
Thank you, Counselor President Barry. I agree about watching the expenses. I've worked with lots of executive search firms and they really make it easy. You just get an email with a packet of information and they vetted everyone. Makes it very, very simple. I thought when we discussed this a month ago or six weeks ago, at least for myself, I remember thinking that the hybrid model would be one that wouldn't take as much of your time and your staff's time. We could get some of the attributes that the executive search firm would be able to offer as far as a broad search. I don't know if they do much of the vetting when you do a hybrid process. I don't know what, what they do and what we do. But that's one where I feel like perhaps a happy medium is, is an approach that could be affordable, but also broad. Thank you.
Yeah, both, both great points about the national search form or the hybrid model. I remember too, that when we spoke about this before, we all, I thought that we kind of were looking at the hybrid model. And I definitely appreciate, appreciate your points about, you know, not putting you in a tough spot by doing an internal kind of promotion or an internal search. So I think it's, to echo the point, I think it's, I mean, this is, hopefully we have this city manager for a long, long time and it's going to be very important that we find the best of the best to set up our city for success. And so I, I'm open to, to both options. If anyone else has any other comments.
Boy, the issue of transparency resonated with me. I do not want the communities to think that we didn't do the best option to evaluate who would lead unless they have generated an AI capability to totally do a mirror image of Mr. Cosgrove. And we can just, there's plenty that would. But with that, I think I'm going to take the conservative approach, at least in my thought, is to just do a full recruitment. At this point, I don't want second guessing later that we could have spent the money to do a fair, wide-ranging recruitment process. I will let you know for everybody that I did have a conversation with Mayor Lube of Tigard, and she indicated slim pickings because they just hired a city manager and they used a recruitment process. So we have to be prepared that, although I think Willsville's like the Harvard standard of cities, that we may have not the best applicant pool externally.
It's potential.
So that's my thought.
I feel I do have direction. I do want to just make sure that looking at the potential timeline, that with selecting an executive recruitment firm, council during the summer months would have time to make that selection? Or if they wanted to, if you would like to create a search, or not a search committee, but a committee to select the recruitment firm, or if you are interested in the entire council participating in that process?
What have we historically done in the past?
So for the recruitment firm in which we hired Mr. Cosgrove, we did have the entire council participate in that selection of the recruitment firm. It began in, sorry, it's going to take me a second. I believe in November of 2010, and then we had selected and started. and then we had selected and started recruiting in the beginning of February, I believe it was.
And I will say, as a candidate, looking back on that, that was a very seamless, confidential process that I appreciated.
So it does take a lot of time to go through that process. I just want to make sure that, it's a big-time commitment, so I just want to make sure that I'm upfront about that.
When you're talking about the process, are you talking about just having a recruitment firm lead the selection? Or were you talking about having a committee represent the council and then bringing it back to the council?
My understanding, when I was selected, is that the city council chose the recruitment firm. There was no, like, subcommittee of the whole council, right?
Correct.
So, and the process that I went through was a phone interview, then an in-person interview with the recruitment firm, and then as I was elevated up the candidate list, it was, I think there was a citizen panel, is there an employee panel? Panel, I remember that. That was one of the hardest questions I got. And then the city council. I thought there were some citizen members involved, too.
So there weren't any citizen members involved, as far as I remember, but I could be recalling incorrectly, involved in the recruitment process as far as the interviews were concerned, but we did have citizen input. Open house, yes.
So I thought it was a pretty inclusive process that included, you know, all the major elements of the community, I think the business, the chamber was involved to some degree. But yeah, it was a very good process.
And if I may just jump in from a procedural standpoint, the reason why it's really important to get documented what the process you all want to do is because for, to utilize the executive session for parts of it, we need to have an official recruitment plan.
I like trying to duplicate the model that Brian said worked well for his experience.
I agree. Your thoughts?
Then I can release those, that RFP, and we will hopefully receive proposals within the next couple of weeks.
And I guess from a time point of view for city council, I guess if necessary, we'd always call a special meeting to make sure we can get the process done, if necessary.
That is how it, how it came to be in 2010, where city council did have to hold a couple of special meetings during the day, I believe it was, to go through all of the interviews for the recruitment firm.
Okay.
And then the other thing that I noticed in the packet, that if it were to come down to this, if the timeline got stretched, there still is the option that we could have a temporary city manager from existing city staff that we could put in place to fill a gap if needed, up to six months.
So there, an interim city manager, yes, for up to six months. And so if we go through a recruitment process and don't find the person that council would like to hire, then we can, you can appoint an interim city manager, and we can go through another recruitment process.
More options.
Yeah.
I'm glad that Councilor Cunningham brought that up, because I've experienced that, and I think it's important for us to understand that we don't want to get disappointed if the first round doesn't bring us the quality of candidate that we're looking for, that we do have a plan that we can put into place, and that we should be persistent with what we're looking for rather than move too quickly.
And I think we have good internal candidates that would meet the interim manager phase, and we had to go that route, so, but thank you for bringing that up.
Okay. Thank you.
Next up is Wilsonville Industrial Land Readiness.
Good evening, council. Daniel Polly, Planning Manager. And while Ms. Luxoy brings that up, I'll just give a little introduction here. Tonight, our intent is a little different than a typical work session, really to do a briefing on this topic, as it's something that, it's been a while for those councilors that were on the past council, and then our new councilors really haven't really visited this topic with you. So wanted to give a background, as there was quite a process that went on to get us to this point. And then we have a number of future planned work sessions where we will get into more detail and policy discussion. So with that, Cindy Luxoy, Associate Planners here, as well as Matt Lorenzen, Economic Development Director, who are really our internal project team on this project. Cindy?
Good evening, Merrill Neal and councilors. We are here tonight to review background information about the Basalt Creek planning area, and the information is provided to prepare for the June 2 council work session, where a discussion will focus on the city's vision, planned land uses for the area, and the current economic context to inform the master plan expected to be adopted at the end of the year. Specific topics in our presentation tonight include the regulatory context that brought the Basalt Creek planning area into the urban growth boundary, and how it relates to industrial land planning, a review of the land use types identified in the Basalt Creek Concept Plan, and a refresh on the Concept Plan guiding principles. Since the year 2000, approximately 2,000 acres of land in what is referred to as the South County Industrial Area had been planned by Metro to be brought into the urban growth boundary to address a regional need for employment land. In 2004, by Metro Ordinance Number 41040B, the Basalt Creek planning area, shown in blue on the map on the left of the slide, was added to the UGB. At that time, a new limited-access major freight arterial also was planned to link lands in the South County Industrial Area to one another and connect them to the regional freight network. This was referred to as the I-599W connector. As shown on the map on the right, there were various possible alignments considered for the connector. The north and south alignments are identified with a black bubbled line, and the Basalt Creek area is shaded orange on the map for reference. In 2010, Wilsonville and Tuolleton signed a memorandum of understanding to jointly plan the Basalt Creek area and received a Metro Construction Excise Tax Grant to fund the planning effort. In subsequent years, a transportation refinement plan was prepared, and the location of the jurisdictional boundary between Wilsonville and Tuolleton was determined, and an extensive joint planning effort between the cities and involving Washington County and Metro occurred. The TRP Action Plan is shown on the map on this slide. It consisted of 18 transportation investments with timing of projects prioritized through an analysis of likely transportation needs in 2020, 2030, and 2035, based on growth assumptions from the adopted Regional Transportation Plan. Each investment added important improvements to the major transportation system in Basalt Creek to support future development, adding new multimodal facilities and upgrading existing facilities to urban standards. It was assumed that future concept planning for Basalt Creek would identify locations for additional lower-classification roads and other transportation facilities to serve future development as well. This slide includes an excerpt of the Metro Title IV Industrial and Other Employment Areas map showing Wilsonville and the Basalt Creek planning area. Basalt Creek, similar to other industrial areas in the city, was designated industrial area on the Title IV map after being added to the UGB. Title IV industrial areas have protections against certain types of non-industrial uses and for efficient movement of freight. The Basalt Creek Concept Plan was adopted in 2018. The Concept Plan map is shown on this slide. The Basalt Creek Parkway forms the jurisdictional boundary between Wilsonville and Tuolleton, and land use types are identified. Consistent with Metro's, the Metro Ordinance and Title IV of the Urban Growth Management Functional Plan, Wilsonville's portion of the Basalt Creek Concept Plan south of the Parkway is intended for various intensities of urban industrial development, including high-tech employment, light industrial, and craft industrial. The West Railroad area, which is shaded in gray, wasn't given a land use because of the many constraints in the area, such as extensive natural resources, steep slopes, and access limitations for transportation and utilities. The high-tech employment land use type was modeled, as modeled in the Concept Plan, included high-tech single users accompanied by manufacturing and some warehouse space. Employment was assumed to be roughly half office and half industrial. Initially modeled as one- and two-story buildings, the city desired to provide opportunities for four- and five-story office buildings as well, particularly near I-5 and along Southwest Boones Ferry Road. Some examples of this type are illustrated on the slide. This slide shows some examples of the light industrial land use type. As modeled in the Basalt Creek Concept Plan, it included primarily manufacturing and warehouse uses in single or multi-tenant buildings with some office and commercial activities. Employment was assumed to be roughly 70% industrial, with the remainder roughly split between warehousing and office. The uses and form of development in the light industrial type is similar to development in existing industrial areas in the city. The craft industrial land use type responds to existing single-family residential development in the area, topography and natural constraints of the Basalt Creek Canyon, and the area's location directly south across the future extension of the Basalt Creek Parkway from residential land and a planned neighborhood commercial node in Tuolleton. While the area was roughly, was originally intended for industrial use, consistent with the purpose for which it was brought into the UGB, the city recognized that traditional industrial development might not be a good fit for these properties due to the various constraints, and the area was designated an employment transition area. The images on this slide provide some examples of how the area might evolve over time, initially by adding home businesses and cottage industries and accessory structures, transitioning to a variety of craft industrial and maker spaces housed in repurposed or converted buildings, and eventually to two- and three-story buildings used by craft industries on the ground floor with live-work spaces or industrial units, or residential units above. The table on this slide summarizes the assumed mix of uses, such as office, industrial, warehousing, and some retail in each of the land use types. The highest number of jobs was assumed to be in the high-tech employment type and the lowest in craft industrial. All the land use types support adjacent and nearby industrial areas, such as the Coffee Creek Industrial Area, and provide flexibility to meet a range of market demands. Our final topic is the Concept Plan guiding principles, which were identified by the Wilsonville and Tuolleton Joint Council during the concept planning process. The guiding principles are shown here, adapted to apply only to Wilsonville, and categorized into three types: those that are market-driven or based on economics and market dynamics, those that are aspirational or take a more future-oriented and visionary approach, and those that are balanced between being market-driven and aspirational. By sorting into those categories, you can see that the guiding principles lean toward the aspirational, while striving for a balance that considers market conditions and industrial land demand within the context of the long-term vision for Basalt Creek of creating a uniquely attractive industrial business community. The information we've provided tonight will be helpful context for city council to prepare for discussion on June 2. At that work session, we will present key findings from recent market and land use studies, discuss the continued viability of proposed land uses in today's economic climate and over the 20-year master planning horizon, and seek council's guidance about whether the land use types continue to align with the city's vision as reflected in the guiding principles and the concept plan. This input will shape the Basalt Creek Master Plan expected to be adopted at the end of the year. This concludes our presentation tonight. We don't have specific discussion items for council, but are happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
And some of those questions, we may defer to some of those future work sessions as well, if they're more well-soaked, but we'll try to touch on them as much as we can tonight without going too deep on some of those topics that we plan to present in the future.
Just kind of a general question. Thanks again for your presentation. So, you know, since we had COVID-19 and the economies changed and whatnot, so has the staff seen changes in the Basalt Plan that we're putting together? Or have we kind of come up with an idea and it still fits, and we're continuing that trend? Do you know what I mean?
So that will be, definitely be a topic of discussion on June 2. We, and during that work session, we'll talk more in detail about the economic studies and the market analysis that we've done, as well as the site suitability analysis, both of which, they confirm that the land use types that were envisioned in the Concept Plan are still viable, still valid, with some, a few exceptions or a couple of caveats. So for instance, the office market has, is not as robust as it used to be, and that may not, depending on how many, you know, people return to the office, or there's a lot more remote work these days. So in the high-tech employment land use type, it may be that it won't end up being, you know, 50% office, as was envisioned in the plan. There may need to be some adjustment of that as far as an expectation of what types of development we'll have in that, in that land use type. Did you want to add anything else to that?
Yeah, the only other thing that we, outside of that, kind of, I think office is really that sector that has obviously changed the most since 2019, and that's partly why we really went into these studies, and we look forward to sharing those with you. Also, we looked at changes in land use. There has been some changes in terms of number of contractors, establishments in particular, and how kind of the market dynamics of that and how that impacts like timeline for redevelopment. And so we have a lot of information on those topics to share as well.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it. I mean, the location is just, we're so fortunate to have it. It's close to I-5, it's kind of tucked away, it's wonderful, so exciting. Thank you.
Yeah, so kind of looking through the packet and some of those, what do we call them, the guiding principles, one of the ones that kind of jumped out at me and raised some curiosity that I sent to you earlier today, is the part about providing recreational opportunities in this area. And it sounded like, from your response, that this is going to be something that Parks and Rec would be taking on.
So there are a couple of different, the main resource, well, there's a lot of natural resources out in the area. And there have been plans for years to have, for instance, the Ice Age Tonkin Trail that is planned to go along the western side of West Railroad near the Coffee Creek Wetland Complex. That's a regional project. There's also been plans to have a trail along the west side of the canyon, central to Basalt Creek, that there will be tie-ins to, for instance, the multimodal facilities that are on the Parkway, and a place where that can, is it a touchdown, or, you know, where that trail will touch down on the south side of the Parkway, and then go underneath the Parkway to connect with Tuolleton, as well as south to connect with other resources within the city. And then there's also maybe a trail along I-5, on the west side of I-5, in the eastern, the very eastern part of Basalt Creek. So the, those types of recreation, that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about, you know, new parks in the area. There may be small areas that we call waysides that are similar to what we're requiring in Coffee Creek for employees, for bicyclists to use. So I think that when it comes to, you know, development as well as long-term maintenance and management of those, it's going to be a combination of jurisdictions.
and management of those, it's going to be a combination of jurisdictions that will be contributing to that. They're in Washington County, some of them are metro, the one along I-5 would be ODOT. So, I think there will be, I think it's yet to be determined, you know, how those will be maintained or managed in the future.
And also, Walinton, and we've been engaged with Walinton, because, I mean, this is the first time we're matching up to Walinton, and Walinton does have park facilities planned immediately to the north as well. So, the connectivity to those is important. But yeah, it'll be a variety, and not yet fully determined. That will come as iterations come together, typical as we've seen elsewhere in development. But Parks and Rec is engaged, as we are also engaged with the Walinton Parks and Rec Director, of course, which we know well because he used the word here, so.
Right. Thank you for that. It's just, that definitely kind of raised a point for me, given our recent Council goals to, that we're looking to maintain park service at this point. It is a giant part of our city budget, and so just being aware that as we move through this, that we just kind of keep our eye on that and make sure that we're being smart with that. The other piece that I was going to mention was, you know, for me, looking at this, and I've been watching some of the Planning Commission meetings on this, I was able to just barely catch up right before I got here with the last part of Basalt Creek meeting from the last Planning Commission meeting. For me, I remember the Planning Commission meeting where there was a lot of talk about the aspirational approach to this, and given that this is such a prime piece of real estate in the metro area, it's considered one of the best places to build in this industrial property, and that we really keep our eye on the prize here, that with our city, with some of the budget constraints that we're looking at, and looking to find ways to save money and make money and generate revenue, that we try to find every possible way we can maximize here and really make this a win for the property tax base to really help. You know, industrial land is a better, more efficient property tax base than residential, where that's generally a drawn services, and this is generally a revenue gain. So, I just would throw that out there, that we really keep our eye on the prize on this area as we go through these discussions in the future. Thank you.
Do we often utilize urban renewal to help develop this area? Would that be something we would explore at the right time? I'm just kind of...
The short answer is yes. Matt, you had, yeah, I mean, we can make comment, but we'll bring the expert up here.
I think the short answer is that it's worthy of exploration. The scenarios we would be looking at within the context of from here to the end of the calendar year on this Willer Project would be to explore the feasibility of a standalone Basalt Creek area, whether that even pencils out. As you know, there's a Coffee Creek urban renewal area already in place. Would it make sense, for example, to strategically realign that boundary to benefit both Basalt and Coffee Creek in an efficient way? Because really, they are part of just the greater industrial landscape there, so it may make sense from a financial feasibility standpoint, as well as just common sense, to realign Coffee Creek rather than creating a standalone new Basalt Creek urban renewal area. We also may find that it doesn't make sense, and that's not the Council's goal at all, but we're going to bring you information to make an educated and informed decision there.
I just want the information. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Okay, next up on the work session agenda is utilizing opioid settlement funds for
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Amanda Gile Hinman, City Attorney. So, tonight I'm here to discuss with the Council, examining a pilot program for a contracted mental health and addiction peer support specialist. So, as the Council knows, at the last Council meeting, you all adopted your FY-25 to 27 Council Goals, one of which is around public safety. Within the public safety goal, there are two outcomes. One of the outcomes is listed to expand on-the-ground mental health resources to support the community, and the strategy for that outcome is to, is Strategy 2.6, and it's to develop a pilot program for a contracted peer support specialist. So, we are working on one of your first Council Goals tonight. I want to start with a general understanding of what a peer support specialist is. A peer support specialist is not a case manager or a therapist. A peer support specialist is somebody with lived experience to walk with individuals as they seek the help they need. So, that's really what we're talking about tonight. So, the agenda for tonight is I'm going to give a brief background. There's a lot more background information in the Council Packet, so I'd encourage members of the public to read the Council Packet for some more background information generally of how we got here, how the nation got here. Then we'll talk about approved uses of the funds from national settlements, the city informal task force recommendation that developed from that, some proposed implementation, and then I have some questions for Council specifically tonight, whether to undertake the pilot program that was identified, whether to seek a contract with the Mental Health and Addiction Association of Oregon, and what performance measures to consider. So, a brief background about the national settlements. There's been several. The first one was in 2021, and that was with three distributors and Janssen. Janssen is Johnson &amp; Johnson, essentially. The three distributors must pay $21 billion over 18 years, and Janssen must pay $5 billion over nine years. And then in late 2022, there were agreements announced with three pharmacy chains, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart, and then two additional manufacturers. These, the manufacturers being Allergen and Teva. Teva has to pay $3.34 billion over 13 years and provide either $1.2 billion in a generic version of Narcan over 10 years, or $240 million in cash in Lew. And then there's an additional $2.02 billion over seven years from Allergen, and then CVS has to pay $4.9 billion over 10 years, Walgreens has to pay $5.52 billion over 15 years, and Walmart has to pay $2.74 billion, which must be made within six years. There are two additional settlements that we're anticipating coming, but they have not been finalized yet, so we don't have the dollar figures for those. But what that shows is there are still additional settlements that are occurring even today. So, there's still additional funding that's coming in. As of right now, as identified here, there's over $44 billion that has been settled as far as opioid settlement funds.
One step, and maybe you already said it and I missed it, but the settlement means that they admitted there was some kind of wrong, or can you just...
There's no admission of guilt in any of these settlements.
Okay, but can you define why they're giving money?
So, the, well, we'll get, let me go to the next slide, because this is basically why they're doing it. So, what the settlements are, they're all part of a multi-district litigation, meaning a bunch of different parties come into one court and say, "This court is going to be where we decide what's going to happen with all this litigation." And because they were, because these defendants were being sued all over the country, it was in their best interest to consolidate and figure out what to pay rather than litigating piecemeal. So, what they had to do, though, to get that was basically buy-in, not only from the plaintiffs, but what they wanted additionally was any jurisdiction that could potentially get money under the settlement. They wanted to get, they wanted to try and get all those parties in. So, basically, it's like, we've got one payment we're doing, and that's settling any current or potential future litigation. So, Wilsonville was not a party to any of these lawsuits, but Wilsonville is a jurisdiction that could potentially make a claim, saying that we've suffered, our community has suffered damages as a result of the opioid epidemic. And in a way to avoid Wilsonville coming down the line later and suing, what the defendants asked was, "All right, plaintiffs, try to bring in as many of these jurisdictions as possible, we'll pay additional money, everybody's going to get some amount of money, whether they participated or not, but what we do in response is we waive our right to ever seek a claim in the future." So, by entering into the settlement, it's kind of a win, it's a win-win or a lose-lose, depending on how you look at it, in that it settles a lot of claims or potential claims across the board, but it also means that these parties have to pay a pretty significant amount of money. So, it's exactly what you saw with tobacco is a perfect example, it's very similar to that, or what you saw with the airbags, with the airbag lawsuits. So, pretty similar. So, Wilsonville did sign on as a preview, I think most of you knew that, but Wilsonville did sign on to the settlement, which meant that we don't have to litigate it, but also we don't have a right to litigate in the future. And we fall under Oregon's, because Oregon was a party to all of this, we fall under Oregon as that plaintiff, so we have an agreement with Oregon to get funding from these settlements. So, Oregon receives all the funding from these settlements and then distributes them accordingly, based on a percentage that's in the agreement. So, you can see, the percentage is pretty small for Wilsonville, but it does add up over time, especially when you talk about all the different lawsuits, all the different settlements. Right now, we have about $130,000 in the bank from the settlements that we've collected, and those come in periodically, they're all different schedules, but anywhere from quarterly to annually, we get different sums of money from all the different settlements from these lawsuits. So, we'll be continuing to receive money for 18 years, because the longest time of any of these settlements is 18 years at this point. So, we will continue to receive some amount of money. I would say that probably the largest weight of the money we've already received at this point, but yes, we will continue to receive money over time. Does that answer your question? Okay. I did also want to note that one of the things that Wilsonville could have done, that the prior councils elected not to do, is Wilsonville had the choice of giving our funds that we received to the counties and having the counties decide how to use the funds they would have had to use them in Wilsonville, but it would be up to their decision-making how they use it, and prior councils elected to keep the money in Wilsonville, meaning Council needs to decide how to spend the money. Now, why that's important is because under the Oregon agreement, you have to spend the money within five years of receipt, so that five years is rolling with every check that we get, essentially, but you have to spend it within five years of receipt, or it goes back to the state for the state allocation. So, that money then is not ours to use anymore. So, that's why this is really important, because as you heard, the first settlement was in 2021, so we are nearing the time where we need to start using some of the funds. As of right now, we haven't used any of our settlement funds. So, the settlements all have an exhibit tied that lists out the different uses of how they can be used. So, there are requirements for you have to fall under one of several different types of uses. They're generally grouped in three categories: treatment, prevention, or other uses. I gave, in the Council Packet, there's an attachment of one of the settlements that has that exhibit that lists all the different uses you can use the money for. That is pretty much regurgitated in every single settlement, it's just labeled as a different exhibit letter, but it's all the same. So, I particularly want to draw Council's attention, given what we're talking about here on the peer support specialist, is that on page 121 of the Council Packet, Item B2 lists peer support services as an allowed use, and then on pages 123 and 129, they are again listed as, peer support services are identified as appropriate uses of the funds. So, those fall under both treatment and prevention. When you get to other uses, essentially, that's kind of a catch-all that includes things like training, planning, and research. That's, it was, we'll get into why we made the decision, why the internal group decided on a peer support services, but generally, the goal was always to find a really impactful way to use the money, and so when the other uses category, we didn't look too far down into. So, getting to the task force recommendation, back in 2023, the Council asked staff, when the decision was made not to give the money, not to give our money to Clackamas County, Council asked staff to bring a group of interested parties together, some stakeholders together, and come up with a recommendation for how to use the funds. So, in the Council Packet, it lists all the participants, but includes our nonprofit service providers, Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, the Fire Districts, the School District, Clackamas County. So, we had a pretty broad group of people with direct experience, working with community members who are suffering from a substance use disorder, to help inform how we should use the money. The goals that we set out, like I said, is that we want to make the biggest, basically the biggest bang for the buck, is how do we use the money in a really impactful way, given that we have relatively limited funds? And then secondarily is, we don't want to reinvent the wheel. Clackamas County is already doing a lot of work, the state is doing a lot of work, TVFNR is doing a lot of work. So, we don't want to duplicate work that's already being done, we want to supplement and support that work. We got recommendations from providers about how we should use that money, and that kind of, that's how we really narrowed in on the peer support specialist. So, both Brenda Evans, our Behavioral Health Specialist, and our nonprofit service providers, Heart of the City and Wilsonville Community Sharing, sort of honed in on the peer support specialist, and there's a reason for it. Brenda's job is mainly supposed to focus on individuals in crisis. So, individuals in crisis who maybe aren't, you know, maybe law enforcement, like an enforcement component isn't what's needed, is that they really just, they need some help, but they're in crisis. What we're finding is we have a lot of individuals who frequent the library, or our community center, or go to Wilsonville Community Sharing or Heart of the City, who maybe need some additional help but aren't in crisis. And what, because staff members maybe aren't fully equipped or are busy, aren't able to handle or take care of that individual at that time, Brenda is the person who ends up getting called. So, she gets stretched really thin on aspects of, that are maybe a little bit outside the scope of what her job really is about. And so, it was from Brenda, who has worked with organizations like MHAAO, who offered this as a potential way to use the opioid settlement funds that she thought would be really impactful, because the work's there, the need's there. So, we also, we did consider other things like buying, you know, getting supplies of Narcan, or doing some additional law enforcement training, but the feedback that we got is that there are already resources available for those, and so we didn't feel like that was maybe the best way to use the opioid funds for those other types of uses. So, oh, and I just wanted to, I did want to call out, I do have members of MHAAO here, because some of the questions are around whether to go ahead and move forward with a pilot project for MHAAO, and also, if we do, what would be, how would we measure success? What are the metrics and the criteria that we'd want to, the information that Council would want back to determine whether or not the program's successful? I do have them here to talk a little bit about their program and to help engage, so I'm not playing, so, help engage with Council on like what exactly they could track and what information would be important. And I also understand that there might be some questions about MHAAO versus other providers that I can fill in, or they can, but I'd invite them to come up real quick Jamie, do you want to kick it off?
Sure. Yeah, thank you, City Attorney Amanda. Hello, Mayor, councilors, Council President. I'm really honored to be here and talk about some of my favorite topics. One is recovery, two is grandchildren, but that's not why I'm here today, I'm here for MHAAO and peer services. And Amanda, you did fantastic presentation, I don't know, job well done, we're out of here. But I, my name is Janie Gullickson, I am the Executive Director of the Mental Health and Addiction Association of Oregon, or MHAAO. We are, well, tomorrow, it'll be hot off the press, our rebrand, so we will, are newly named the Peer Company. So, I think that might be a better way to represent who we are. We are an organization of over 200 people, most of who identify as being in recovery from mental health and... from mental health and/or substance use challenges, and all the intersecting life experiences that go with that. And that is my story as well. I used to be a resident of Wilsonville for a couple of years, and you can imagine, it was at Coffee Creek Koreshkino facility. So it is an honor to be able to live a life of recovery and present to you here today as a woman, 17 years in recovery. And I have our senior director of programs with me. I'd like to introduce.
Thank you so much. Thank you, City Attorney Amanda, for your fabulous presentation. And thank you, Mayor Sean O'Neill, as well as all the council president and councilors. It is, again, my name is Terry Lechran Myers, and I am the senior director of Mental Health Addiction Association of Oregon, soon to be the Peer Company. And I am excited for us to be able to go a little bit deeper into whatever questions and ideas and thoughts you have.
So before we get into implementation, I guess I'll go ahead and preview for council. I do understand that there were some questions about MHAAO compared to some of the other peer support services that Clackamas County contracts with. And there is a link in the staff report to the Clackamas County page on peer support, peer and family support services. So I welcome the council and members of the community to look into that. There are a myriad of really great organizations that Clackamas County contracts with. And in particular, they all focus on different, different aspects. So for example, the Living Room is geared towards LGBTQ plus youth. Dual Diagnosis Anonymous provides peer support group settings. And then Full Time is particularly focused on mental health, individuals experiencing mental health challenges. What's, I think somewhat unique about MHAAO is, they are equipped with peer support services for people who have co-occurring challenges, being both mental health challenges and substance use challenges. And that's particularly important, given how, the money, the source of the funding here, is that we are using opioid settlement funds. So we need to make sure that it is geared towards substance use disorders, which MHAAO has that experience. But that's not to say that there aren't other programs out there that are fantastic at providing peer support services. So I guess, before I get into implementation, if council has any questions for MHAAO, I'd invite those questions at this time. Or for myself, as far as how the task force landed on MHAAO, soon to be the peer, the Peer Company?
The Peer Company.
That's so much easier to say.
Where is the Peer Company located, like the headquarters for it?
Yeah, so, we are, our admin officers are in southeast Portland on 28th and Powell. We have a recovery, we like to call it the Peer Connection Center, or Recovery Center, and where our direct services, many of our staff there are housed, and that's on 98th and Powell. We have a big presence in the tri-county area, including Clackamas County, with all the health systems in the Portland metro region, Kaiser, Legacy, Adventist, OHSU. And so, as well as housing providers, the Housing Authority of Clackamas County is another funder of ours. And so, we at MHAAO have, or the Peer Company, have over 40 unique programs, many of which are community-based, if not most. There's a component of, of being able to walk shoulder to shoulder with folks as they navigate multiple system involvement. And, and so I think that here is, City Attorney Amanda shared, that we, we are pretty unique in that many of our staff identify as having both a lived experience of mental health and addiction recovery, navigating the system, whether reentry from hospitalization, incarceration, child welfare involvement, houselessness, things like that. And so, and just what does recovery look like, and how can we help you access that? If that answers the question.
And then, if somebody in Wilsonville has a problem, and they need to connect with your organization, well, how, how will that look?
Yeah, it could be from funder referrals, that oftentimes are pretty siloed to the criteria of that program. But we also have open referral system, where if you go to our website, the first thing that pops up is, are you looking for support? Do you need help? And here's how. And it's a link to the referral. And then internally, we sort that out, according to what part of town are we in, and what program is most appropriate.
And then, do they work with you in person, or over the phone, or Zoom, or how does that work?
All of the above, whatever the preference is. But we, we like to form that relationship in person, as quickly as possible. Peer support is what we like to say the magic sauce of the array of resources that are in our community, because we can form that connection very quickly, by sharing just enough of our lived experience that folks know, oh, okay, they understand, because they've been there. And then, we can sort out what other things that they would like to connect to, or resources that are more urgent, that we can help get them to.
Counselor Shobin. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, congratulations on your sobriety.
Thank you.
My question just was very similar to Council President Barry's, in that, at your sites, do you just take walk-in clients? Or is there a referral? You did say there's a referral process, but do you also just say, hey, come on in, we've got the help you need?
Well, we were very excited to open the Peer Connection Center, and have a place where we could do just that, accept people walking in, whether they came in with all their belongings, or they're on their back, or pulled up in a limo. It's hard to navigate and find the services you need, especially if you're in crisis, or a family member's in crisis. And so, now we are just in a phased approach, welcoming people to walk in the door. We're not a day center or shelter, but it is a welcoming place to, we're starting out with groups. So that's where, at that point, we just opened our doors in January. And peer support specialists who are already connected to folks are meeting people there at the recovery center. And we have clothing closet, computers, and we'd love to invite any of you, and all of you, for a tour at some point. And just a place to be in community and build community with others.
Thank you very much for this. This is something that is exciting for me. And I definitely appreciate your approach of kind of offering just enough to someone, so that they understand that you're talking to somebody who gets it. Actually, recently spoke about that at a mental health fair, about finding the right person for you, and having that connection that they understand a little bit about where you're, not exactly where you're coming from, but a little bit about where you're coming from. Definitely helps. One of the questions that I sent to Ms. Kyle Hinman earlier was, just kind of from a 30,000-foot view of how the program's been working in Clackamas County for them. If you can kind of give us a little bit of detail on that.
So I can speak to the data part of it, and that is that, with all the programs that we have, each one of our contracts have ideals of what they would like to accomplish in each of those contracts. And so, the outcomes, and, and the, each contract has a specific need or desire to track certain things. And so, it depends on, like with our older adult community, they asked us to, to talk about how many engagements we had per week, per month, and how long were they engaged for. And so, we have a data system that allows us to track about 500 different data sets. And so, the success rate that happens comes with each contract's desire of what they think is important.
Everything. We'll take it all.
And so, we're tracking demographics, we're, we're tracking how many minutes per day, per hour. We're able to know, measure whether someone has had multiple episodes of going to the hospital for injuries or a crisis. So we can track as many data points as you would like, and as little as we like. And, and some of them is just as simple as, how have we improved your life today? You know, and, and they can base it off of, well, today I felt like I was heard, and that I was able to be taken to the hospital, and that the person walked side by side with me. And so, we have success stories in our reports, in our quarterly reports, we have monthly reports. Some of the reports are asking for how many people are on a caseload. So if we have a peer that is working 15 to 20 peers, how many times a week do they engage? What are the most common things that they're, they're doing with the peer? And then also taking the eight dimensions of wellness, and seeing where on that wellness wheel are they wanting to focus on today? So sometimes, we can pull the data to find out, is the person, like if we're looking at a certain population of people, are they focused on physical wellness, or are they really focused on financial wellness? And so, with our older adults, they were really focusing on connections. And so, on that one report, we, we brought up that circle of friends, brought them a level of natural supports. And so, the reports were able to show the connections with each of the different populations of people that we serve, and, and, and what are the specific needs.
Gotcha.
And I'll just note, Terry sent me some, some data today, and I think this is, I'm assuming CC means Clackamas County. So, from January 1, 2024 to the present, I'll just give some stats. I'm going to take off my glasses. 89% worked with peer support specialists to create a person-directed plan. 78% reported that there was an increase in their natural supports. 80% reported peer support helped them avoid relapse, returning to inpatient treatment, hospitalization, or jail. 22% acquired a safe place to live that is supportive of their recovery or wellness goals during participation with peer support services. And then, Terry also provided an example of Clackamas County's quarterly report template. It includes information like, how many total individuals, did your program support this quarter? How many new individuals did your program support? Age demographics, different things about, like, different, because an individual might need assistance with getting employment, or getting housing, or other types of services. So there's questions about that, about the different types of, of other services and outreach that they may have been able to do. I feel like, like Keith now, putting my glasses on and on. Yeah, so they've got a bunch of different, and so that's why I say, looking at, I pulled Clackamas County as an example of some of the tracking that we could do. I think 500's going to feel a little overwhelming, if we need that for tracking. But if we get a sense up from council of what, what do you all care about as far as the information that we're getting, what does success look like? You know, is it getting people connected to this, to other types of services and the like? That's all things that we can build into the contract, and then track, report back. And then, when it comes time to evaluate the pilot project and decide if it's something that council sees value in moving forward with, you've got that data to explore a little bit further.
Right. I would love to get maybe a list of the different data points, measurements that we can look at, and kind of look at what we want to track. I can think of a few off my head, but I know I wouldn't come up with half as many if, I'd come up with a lot more if I had a multiple-choice test in front of me, instead of just coming on the fly. So, yeah, very much appreciate that. I know that, you know, there was actually a success story that Chief Wurps shared recently, and I wish I could remember the officer's name, where he actively entered into a mentorship, relationship with a, with a person in the community, and had a very good outcome. And it's one of those things where, as much as our officers want to go out there, and they want to form these relationships, and really grow them, and do all that, it's very hard to do in 40 hours a week, with all the other responsibilities of a police officer. Every once in a while, you'll get an officer that goes above and beyond, and takes some time outside of work to do it. But to get there, in the officer role, is a lot more difficult. And so, I really appreciate this program, and really appreciate. The other question I was going to have is, kind of, how your organization works alongside, or with law enforcement in these contexts? You know, sometimes there is going to be a safety issue in play, and how that kind of plays out generally.
Yeah, that's a great question. We are in our second year of what we still call the pilot, because it's just, there was something magic in, in how it came to be. We met with one of the bike patrol in downtown Portland, one of the officers, Officer Bear, and really just trying to find out what would be helpful. The same thing that you just shared, that officers know that, you know, that this person isn't someone that's needing to necessarily be arrested in the moment, and then, they're not social workers, they're law enforcement. And so, what can they do? And to help in that situation, he said, what would really be awesome, is if there was someone I could call, and they'd show up in 10 minutes or less. Like, we can do that. Give us a demographic, geographic area, so, and, and like downtown Portland, the need is great. A lot of the folks we're going to serve are right there. And so, that has been an incredible partnership and learning opportunity with law enforcement, that has worked so well. And then, community partners, and the way the attraction of this program has just blossomed into this thing, where it's now, you know, five days a week, seven days with some of our other outreach partners. They're, they're calling us, and, and we are showing up and connecting with the folks. We do have a day center downtown as well, so that's been a place we can utilize to, to take people to for showers, and, and just building that relationship and talking with them. But in all three counties, we do have a varying degree of interaction, and/or referral or communication with law enforcement.
I want to thank you for coming. I think this is, I'm really excited about this. Amanda, on data points in this whole process, I really, because I'm not an expert, would be helpful for me to hear from, like, get input through you, what Brenda thinks, what Heart of the City thinks, and what Wilsonville Community Sharing thinks, as far as these, developing these data point strategies. They're very excited about those, but I would like their input on providing that to you, and then hearing back from them, because I would kind of rely on their, their thoughts.
Yeah, absolutely. We can do that.
To kind of add on, like, if there's a community that you have worked with, that you feel has been, like, really successful, if maybe we could, you know, see what, what their data points were?
Absolutely.
What added to their success?
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of data points, though, that I'll just share that I'm interested in. One of them is the linkage between substance abuse disorder, male health, and homelessness, houselessness. So I'd love to see that linkage, because we know that they're, they're linked in so many, many ways. The other is, in my professional career, which I'm now retired from, although I miss tremendously, I have worked with hundreds of infants that have gone through neonatal abstinence syndrome, which is a tragic situation to be a nurse in. But working with the moms and the families of those infants gave me such insight into addiction, and how it works with every mother. Every mother that finds out that she's pregnant, and she's using, is going to quit. They want to quit. Every day, they want to quit. So I would love to see data points on, on what we experience here in Wilsonville, in that particular demographic. Thank you.
Can I?
Amanda, do you have everything you need from us?
I do have another slide. Let me get to that.
Sure.
So, on proposed implementation, so, and this is where we get to sort of the procedural part of it. So, under Oregon public contracting law, jurisdictions are allowed for pilot projects to do an exemption from competitive procurement, where you, where we don't have to go out and do a competitive process. So, given that, the, kind of the work that we've done, particularly around the task force, the recommendation has been, for this one year, this pilot project, to go ahead and pursue that approach, which would come back to council for authorization. Assuming that that all happens, we are looking at executing a contract, probably looking at executing a contract, uh, probably late June or early July. Um, MHAAO has indicated that, uh, we could be part of the recruitment process for this individual, which I think would be really helpful. Um, we've talked internally about Brenda Evans being that person, if she's available, given, um, her work within the community. Uh, we have talked with Wilsonville Community Sharing. They are currently based in Park Tech, um, that they have space for this person to have, um, you know, an office, or, you know, a place for, for any community member who they're working with to come. Um, and I think there would be some good synergy there. And so, Wilsonville Community Sharing is very excited, as you all know, because you got their letter, um, about that prospect. They also anticipate that if the program were to continue, that when they move over to the, um, transit-oriented development site, that their office would continue to have space for this person. So, there, there's some, um, ability there to keep that continuity. And then, like we've discussed, what we would need to do, assuming that the council decides to move forward, is that there would be an evaluation of the program, probably in the February timeframe. So, we could make, we could have council make some decisions about what you all want to do for next budget cycle, and also probably what you want to do as far as, uh, procurement, um, for that next fiscal year. So, that's the proposed implementation that we're looking at. Um, so, I think we've, we've kind of jumped ahead. I, I'd like maybe a formal, yes, please move forward with the pilot program. And then, we've already talked about the performance measures, which we can have a further discussion about that. But generally, you know, is council comfortable moving forward with this process? And then, the next step would be for us to bring back a list of, of performance measurements or criteria to track.
Do we have a consensus of yes?
Absolutely.
We have a consensus of yes.
Great. Okay, we will come back then. I've got notes about the, um, performance measures. In the meantime, as council's thinking about it, if any of you say, I want to make sure we track this, this data point, feel free to send me an email, and I will add that to our list that we've got going.
Thank you.
Uh, one more question.
Yeah.
Uh, so, the, the pilot program, we can just move forward with, uh, shoot, what's the new name?
The Peer Company.
Peer Company. Um, that one's easier. Uh, [laughing] if I can remember it now. It rhymes with beer company. Peer Company. Uh...
Gee, now you got me thinking.
So, um, but when it comes up after the first, after, at the end of the first year, is that something where we would have to put out a competitive, um, search, or?
It would be up for council to decide. So, council could decide to go ahead and do a competitive procurement process, or council could decide then to formally exempt that from, like, how we have a list of all the different things that we exempt from competitive procurement. Council could make that a more permanent decision, but right now, since it's just a pilot program, there's flexibility in the public contracting rules.
Right. And then, my last comment on it will be that I do appreciate that included in our packet, and I'm, here it is. Um, it did list, uh, three different ways that, um, going forward, we might be able to keep, um, this program off of our general fund, and be able to continue to, um, fund it into the future without having to hit our taxpayers directly. So, I appreciate that.
Yes. We, we were very clear on the direction about that, so, from, from the city manager's office.
I concur with those comments. Anybody else?
I just, I, I really like the concept that it's peers, mentoring peers. Um, I just think a lot of people would be a lot more responsive to that, if they know that they're being helped with somebody who's gone through problems, and has been able to solve them, and now is reaching out. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. The work session is adjourned at 6:26 PM. The city council will meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192660, Section 2H, legal counsel litigation, to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of the city with regard to current litigation, or litigation likely to be filed. Members of the public outside of representatives of the news media, please exit council chambers. We'll have a five-minute break to facilitate this. Thank you.